So will you please join me in the.
What do we just to apply the United States. And to the Republic for which stands. One nation under God.
All right, good evening, everyone. Our guests. How are you?
A little late.
Uh. You know, everybody up here, or should I introduce?
I know. This fall from.
Okay.
I'll advise.
For your benefit. In my own memory, I can remember who these people are. Uh, Kristen. Your Korean hat, she had Seattle, also a good start. According secretary Kim Burkhart, our technical. Uh, facilitator. Tim Schneider, our owner and member. October, our planning board member, Scott Neal, planning board member, Ben Ben Lakin, planning board member. But of course. Playing board vice chairman, Chuck Euler. Chairman. Kristen Smith. Our zoning officer. And Lance, uh, Braybad from M R B. And. Chris Nadler, our attorney.
Tom Schwartz usually did, I use, I used to have to turn it around because he would just get. He would get exhausted by the end of the stop.
Another year or two operating. Alrighty, uh, we're gonna follow the agendas published. Uh, so for our guests to exit, should the, uh. Lights go off and emergency situation arise, please go to, uh. It's closest exit, so that's been pointed out to you. We give privilege to the floor, where I think everybody here is. Or an agenda item, anybody, there's nobody out in. Virtual land, so I guess no one's here to. Address us regarding the, uh, anything not on the agenda. So, uh, with that being said, we'll move on to, uh. Uh, testing that. A legal notice was published for tonight's. One hearing, new hearing. With the Carsons. That was published in the Daily Messenger on December seventh. Okay, let's move on, uh. Tonight, we have a couple of continued site plans, we have a public hearing on a new site plan. So we'll go first through the. Continued site plan, first one being. One that's been around for a while, Roger Layton, his property is. Alan fifty-nine ninety-three. County Route thirty-two, spout and application C P N twenty-three oh eighty-eight. To marks engineering, uh, to, uh. Have a site plan approval for the construction of a new single-family residence driveway wastewater system. For the dwelling on which there are two existing accessory buildings in the A R T, A R two. And he also needs a waiver to our special use permit. As well as amendment to the special use permit. Due to some advertising restrictions and filing of applications, uh. This is not. Going before the county planning board, which we have to give them adequate time to respond. So. It will not be on their December agenda, it'll be on their January agenda. Which for us means is being pushed back to. January twenty-third. So another continuation is in order. And I have a most.
I'll move to continue. Um, C P N twenty-three dash zero eight-eight. To January twenty-third meeting.
Yep, I'll second.
Thank you for the discussion. Reasons being. Uh, but yeah, I think it's pretty clear as to. Information we were looking forward from Mr. Layden, uh, that came in, uh. Uh, I think the beginning of this month, so it's not, uh. Forward to the county in time for the meeting, so we have a continuation of the twenty-third. Uh, next year. Well, favor. Okay, motion carries. Let's move on to, uh. Works Engineering representing, uh. Lisa Pope on her property forty-eighty, nine hundred sixteen. This post requesting a site plan approval to fair down and rebuild a family, single-family residence. Variance was required when she had. Acquired, uh. Last month. From the front yard setback for retaining wall. And, uh, John Jones, how are you receiving? Yeah, how's everybody doing? Good. Okay, John, I think, uh, we'd sent you. Packing with some homework last meeting. And, uh, I think a lot of it had to do with. Landscaping issues, shoreline guidelines. Uh, I see from. My permit that you had made some submissions. So if you want to go over those submissions. Since our last meeting, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, sure, so just like I mentioned there, the big. Items from last meeting were the landscaping stuff, so we provided. A landscaping plan. Uh, if you can scroll down.
It's taking a long time.
Um, but yeah, we provided. Uh, some landscaping across the front lawn there. Uh, in front of retaining wall, helps, um. Uh. To help blend in, uh, build a new, uh, home a little better, um. He had some questions last time about the, the. Tree, the existing trees on the. North on the, um. West property line there about keeping those. Um, we're unfortunately gonna have to remove all those trees, uh, on that property line. Just because of where the house is and grading, we weren't able to adjust. Uh, the grading to accommodate that, um. But with removing those, we provided a, uh. Significant amount of landscaping across the front there. Um, and then we show the two existing trees on the. On the lakeside portion. Of the lot, um. And provided, uh, like a shoreline development. Statement with the updated set, excuse me. To, um. Show our compliance, uh. With the guide, with the, uh, shoreline guidelines. Uh, we also uploaded some of the elevations for the house. From, uh, Greater Living Architecture. Uh, just so you guys have a better idea of what that's gonna look like. Um, I think if I'm missing anything. Please remind me, but I think that rounds out. Uh, all that you guys were looking forward from the last meeting.
John, just to confirm, it wasn't on your art drawing, but your house is less than twenty-five feet high.
Yeah.
Shows on your table less than, so you can verify.
Yeah. Yeah. You did a, uh, response to the M R B review, I think, too, didn't you?
Yeah, forgot to mention that we did some, uh, letter back to Lance and the M R B guys, um, our group, excuse me, um. With our updating materials, and Lance, you reviewed that.
Yeah, we provided the letter. Because we just. Finished off the, uh, I don't have anything similar to anything, I let her do it. Um, just a couple of clarifications and stuff, but overall, yeah. You, you had a chance about the changes.
Okay. There was a concern from Mr. Scully, neighbor. He had a letter, uh, dated the sixteenth of September. Um, sent some pictures, I, I. I think he's concerned about. Well, the, the building is actually moving, the house is moving further.
Uh, this is a neighbor to the.
South.
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 Yeah, we spoke about it at the zoning board, uh, meeting when we're going through for the variance, he, um. He submitted a letter and some pictures and stuff, and, uh. His first. Um. On, uh, on his letter, his first issue was. Uh, a setback concern, um. He, he read the code incorrectly. And thought we weren't reading the setback according to some, but we actually are. Um, and then his other concern was about a drainage swell on, on the south side there, we added that in. To the site plan, so. I don't know, that's satisfied, is a. Concern there.
Let me go back to the site plan, just. Do recall that swell. Uh, I guess. Go up a little bit, come.
Kind of see it there.
No, that's good, that's good, yeah.
You're going down the drywall.
Yeah, on the south side, that's south side, there, yeah, those are swell right in the. Drywall, yeah, to.
The roof's being captured, the church still dry, lots inside it as well as. Just really hits, water hits the. It's still a little instant ground and cheap folks, though, right?
Yep.
And the other half of the roof is discharging to the rear. So most of the hard is going to be collected in the district.
And you're saying the, uh, trees in the north have to go because of the grading, uh. Think, correct?
Yeah, that's right, yeah, we, we weren't able to save any of those, unfortunately, uh, just because it's really. Really steep off that side of the house there, I believe the grain already is a one-on-three coming. Um. Down that, that slope there, so we didn't. Want to, uh, increase that anymore.
I will say, though, to your benefit, there are trees behind that.
There is, yeah.
That also is, uh. Those trees being gone won't really diminish a view.
Yeah, you can kind of see, we got the two big trees on the back of the property there.
It's similar to what we did with the garage not too long ago, with Connor and Six in there where. He had to take three trees down and sell. Uh, that he put in on the smoke there, kind of the same thing. I went back to this house and looked at it. From the lakeside. With those. I didn't see.
Well, as long as the trees, lakesides today, which we talked about this week. And the existing tree there in the front yard. That's gonna stay, right?
Uh, that's not a tree there, that's just topsoil.
No, but I mean, I think if you go to the landscape.
Yeah, or in landscape, no, yeah.
And you want to pull up the house elevations. For due diligence on the shoreline. So that wall is out in front there. Uh, yeah, out in front of the deck. So, you, and your landscaping, I think is. You know, part of it's on top of the wall, part of it's down in front of the wall, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then there's more in the front lawn area. Yep.
And those steps that you show in the site plan. Go to that, uh, pad.
Yeah, there's steps on that side of the house there, yeah.
How high does the landscaping go? Rela- relative to the grade? Down the deck.
So there's no landscaping at the deck level, it, it's down at the, where the retaining wall comes into the.
How high, how high is your retaining wall gonna be right there?
Um. Front there, yeah, maybe six feet, maybe.
So, in your drawing, I think your garage is eight to nine feet. At the basement, so that landing, there's gonna be. A wall, so that. Deck almost comes out to ground level forward. Where your landscaping is gonna be on the same plane horse.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I guess.
That's a thirteen course.
There is a thirteen, so that's about a nine and a half.
So, yeah, just trying to get a concept as to how much of the garage doors you would not see.
I don't think you see them.
Obviously in your town, we'll see, we'll be up, or out on the lake. Uh, you can see the other side of the deck. Okay. Uh, if you go up to the, uh, I guess would be the eastern elevation. Yes, sorry. Just scroll down. Yeah, floor plans. So you, you had said, it's no greater than twenty-five feet to me in average height.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, they. Come up with a facade color. Yep, you know, uh, I'm not sure on that one.
Neutral tones, pretty much, so.
Yeah, that's right. Earth tones or something.
So, yeah, so, yeah, it wasn't neutral tones, something like that.
Okay. Not why. Alright, um.
Earthbound neutral material.
Shoreline M R B. Fletcher, you got that? County Planning Board didn't have any comments. Talking about the neighbor's letter, we talked about shoreline. Anything else, Warren?
No, I don't know.
So they, well, there's the way, so, nobody to comment. Okay, we can move on then. Alright, we're looking at a type-two seeker. Just take two and it's a site plan. Why don't we, uh, put them together?
I'll make a motion to approve. Our seeker resolution type-two action. Uh, for C P N twenty-three dash zero nine four ninety-five forty-eighty, County Road sixteen. Uh. For approval plus the single-stage site plan approval. C P N twenty-three dash zero nine five forty-eighty, County Road sixteen with the. Seven, seven conditions listed.
I'll second.
Okay, motion second. Uh, the discussion, Kim, did you look at the, uh. Landscaping schedule at all?
I did notice that that's some ash, but they have to know that there's one of the big trees on the lake side. And ash has problems with the air model.
Okay.
There is potential that that tree will, unless they're three.
Can't tell now, it's a pleasing one.
It's just something to me.
Oh, yeah, I don't know, we all know asterisks, yeah. Uh, okay. This, uh, do we note that, Karen? Uh, okay, I got a motion second for discussion. Not all in favor?
Uh, hi.
Okay, one down.
Thank you.
No. Let's move on to, uh. New public hearing. For the Carsons. Uh, I opened the public hearing, it's for C P N twenty-three one oh six. Again, Mark's Engineering representing, uh, Robert and Mrs. Carlson on her property at fifty-one seventy-three County Route sixteen. It was a subdivision of a one-ninety-seven acre. parcel in the R three zoning district into two lots. Resolving in one vacant. Lot of a little over, almost five point eight acres, the other just being short, that is a. Miss tight, a typo in the area on the, uh, agenda, it is a little bit less than, uh. Four acres, or three point nine five, I believe. And, uh, has one existing, you know, one be smaller lot, level one. And you're here to subdivide. Split in two. You want to make, uh, presentation about, about the property, Mr. Carson?
I don't wish for a presentation, but.
Tell us a little bit about the history, I, I'm, I'm curious about that lot.
Okay. My name is Bob Carson, this is my wife Marilyn. Um. The two lots that, uh, let's be spoke there. The smaller lot. Uh. Roughly four acres. Uh, we purchased back in. Around nineteen sixty-five. And we've had our home under since then. And then. A few years ago. And you have to, pardon me, I'm about eighty-seven years old, so I. Don't remember much.
I didn't remember their names.
But, uh, subsequently. Uh. We bought the piece. And which is referred to as the. Six point. Anywhere from five point seven to six point whatever, three, three, nine, I think. Um. That piece was. Part of. A property. That included that. And then another roughly twelve acres on the opposite side, the current Westlake Road. And then the Westlake Road back in. Fifty-seven or so, well, went up through there. And of course it split that whole property, was all under one deed still. Uh. Several years later. I had the opportunity to sell. On the far side of the Westlake Road. But the potential buyer wasn't interested in both sides. Um. So it took the remaining side. And rather than make a separate deed out of it. I joined it to. The initial. Free plus savings.
Mm-hmm. So you had one lot, back to one lot.
Back to one lot.
Okay.
Um. Nothing's been done with it except pay the taxes for the last several years, uh, it's just a gamble, rebel bit. Didn't try to sell it or anything because. Not too many people looking to buy a rebel bed nowadays. But, uh, at any rate. Uh, recently I had already. Approaches that. Uh, showed some interest in it as. Just protecting their view from their home, which is on the old Westlake. Um. And that got ball rolling as far as taking a look at it and so forth. Uh, my consideration was to. Take a part of that. Roughly. Six point whatever acres. And. Keep that adjoining our initial property. But then with discussing. With the, the board and. Other. People in the know, so to speak. I could see it was possible, a potential of delay, delay, delay. And, uh. Um. So I just abandoned that idea, and we just kept the property the way it was when I bought it. And agreed to. Um. Just, uh. Disassociate one parcel from the other, okay? And, uh. So we have a, we have a durable. Offer on the property. Um, but they didn't want to make the. A formal offer until. We got to this stage.
Subdivision, yeah. Alright, so you're back to create a, create a lot that existed in the past.
In the past.
Uh, okay. And is, is the potential buyer, you said, contiguous to the lot? The lot two?
Uh, no, it's on the opposite side.
On the opposite side.
Of the old Westlake Road.
Oh, to the south.
Okay, yes, yes.
Alrighty. Uh, and. Act, there is access to that lot two off of Westlake Road from that. Driveway that's. Some sort of drab gravel area down there in the bottom. Lance, could you point that out?
You, uh, this is the existing.
That's what, right, you know, you're figuring around just by the, uh, the driveway. Sort of a dash line, right there, you got it. So that's the access to this lot two?
I'm sorry.
Uh, right where the arrow is pointing.
No, um. Eventually. I think it was in the late. Um. Nineties. How. Wait, turn around here.
Ah.
For this property going over here. Because they had. Turned this and made this public. And from here. Down here now. Took down the Westlake Road, the original. Um. Is now abandoned road.
Right.
Uh, so they had a place for the thousands to turn around. That's, that's, that piece is. That's what the primary intent was.
So it looks like, uh. The potential buyer is just gonna keep that. Open. And use it for, uh. Keep your site distance up to the lake, so. You don't think there's any concerns about driveways? Uh. Slopes, they're ten-foot, you know. And your home's down there at the, on the far right?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. And there was consideration of a lot line adjustment one time for the other lot, then. That went away.
I was going to, if we were going to sell a portion of this. But we're gonna keep a part of it, say, back here. And make a lot line adjustment. Then the part of it would. Become current. Addition here.
Okay.
But because of the delays and so forth. I really didn't see you get into that.
Sold it on the files. So that, that probably lies things same. Okay. Uh, board questions? Did the E C D look at this, or? No, I didn't think, I didn't see anything, that's why I have with a question mark. Okay. Uh, there's some wetlands. It shows on the, I guess, the secret.
If, I don't necessarily know, I think it's caught up the lake.
Yeah, so there's that pond.
Yeah, the end of the pond.
Yeah.
It's not like a. The line you had, well, and that I'm aware of based on what I have.
Uh, county public works, uh, rooms had no comments, county. Playing board had no comments, um.
If there's any other question in mind, is there would be natural resources, or, you know, if you say, it's time to develop the property?
Yeah, I had that. If it's ever developed, yeah. Okay. It's one of the things that I can't figure. Yeah, it's my age. Okay, we're ready to move on. Uh, we do have an unlisted action because it is a subdivision. So, uh, let's do the, both the public hearing, excuse me, thank you. And I need to ask anyone who has any comments in the public, and there are none, so. Especially close the public hearing, move on to action. Uh, look for a motion on the seeker unlisted action.
I'll make that motion to, um, approve the seeker resolution for the unlisted action. Of the subdivision at fifty-one seventy-three, County Route sixteen, C P N twenty-three one oh six.
Good motion second. Like, I guess in the part one, it did mention a, uh. Ship of, or that, I, I, again, I think that's something we can address and whatever, right? Developed, okay? So that being. Mentioned, we can move a little in favor?
Uh, hi.
Okay, motion carries, do I have a motion on the subdivision itself?
I'm moved to approve with, we have one condition.
So the typical ones are actually labeled already out in the subdivision plan, but not available a lot, it's time of time safe then. And the notes and then the subdivision areas, it's, uh, sanitary shore connection. Uh, we have the number one, that's about connection to. Possible, you know, providing, uh, available soils and. Uh, sanitary sewer connection. So both standard notes that we typically require are already out there. Most certainly can add them still, if you feel, that's, that's, that's the reason why we. Most certainly can add them still if you feel that's necessary, that's the reason why we.
I don't. Okay, so I have a motion from Scott, did I get a second?
I'll second that one.
Thank you. Uh, we got the right areas in the. Whereas. Okay, we're all good to go, all in favor? Thanks for coming out.
What's the bottom line?
What's the bottom line? Got approved by us.
Thank you.
You don't have to go back and see us.
Merry Christmas.
You can see how you can work with staff as far as. You know, the paperwork's needed recently, alright?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good holiday.
Thank you, you too.
Okay. We're going to a new site plan, C P N twenty three oh forty. Along with C P N twenty three one hundred. By John Jones, works engineering, representing and Gilbert. Uh, who's over on West Ridge, but it's probably a twenty six, twenty five. County Route, uh, twenty two, should be on the agenda. Uh, requesting site plan approval for the construction. Of two new commercial indoor facilities, uh, fourteen thousand three hundred fifty each, six year parking. Base water system, a store facility on a four point eight acre lot. This is in the M U O district. Uh, let me just give a little bit of. Background as to why we're here tonight. What blessed the year tonight? Uh, it was a quest by Mr. Gilbert to change the name of M U O. And before the town board, the town board. Uh, turned to us for an advisory report. Uh, that was, uh. So this beginning of the year, spring sometime. We felt, uh, it was certainly inappropriate use. For the property and we recommended it as such. And then the board, town board directed it back to us for a site plan. Approval, so we're here tonight for a preliminary. Site plan approval, is that correct, is that we agreed upon P R C? And if, uh, approved by us, we go back to town board, they will. Give final blessing on the zoning change and then it will come back to us for finals. Okay. Alright, uh, where are we, John?
Um, you have, I mean, you really hit the nail on the head there, that's something that was, uh, that was perfect.
I didn't describe your plans. I don't get paid enough.
So. Yeah, so two buildings going in. Uh, plan to be indoor sports facility type buildings. So parking is provided, uh, and then. South side of the buildings there and in between the buildings, um. Their, uh, access, uh, swimming access off County Route twenty two. Um, there's parking provided for buses. Uh, for, for schooling and stuff like that. Water, there's water on County Route twenty two that we're gonna connect into, um. There's no sanitary, we're so right, proposing a septic and rear of the lot there. And then, uh, for stormwater. Pretty, um, pretty basic for stormwaters, flows to the low point there. Uh, with stormwater facility in that corner, then there's a creek in the rear of the property. That we are discharging stormwater to. Yeah, we did, so we. We're, uh, because we're going for preliminary, we submitted our sponsor to Amber B's comments today. Uh, just basically stating that plans will be updated. With file, as we submit for final approval, uh, after the town board. Uh, it gets approved, uh, through all those meetings and stuff, will provide final plans for final approval. Um, I didn't see any issues updating further comments. Um, other than that, yeah, um, I think that's about it. This one. Uh, landscaping, we've got provided around the buildings and, um. On the property line there. And lighting, uh, is provided as well, parking lot areas and, uh, on the buildings. Yeah, I think that's about it.
Okay, I, I guess one other preamble I should have said was, uh, if you recall our last meeting or two weeks ago, we. Asked to be the lead agency on seeker. And, uh, the thirty days have come and gone and nobody's objected, in fact, I think I actually saw a letter, somebody's. Confirmed that we should be the lead agency.
Yes, I'll learn that.
Yeah. So it's, uh, it's nice to be one. And, uh, so therefore we will continue with, uh, seeker this evening also. As an unlisted action.
Do we have two questions to have, so just to status up there, one is. Uh, Shippel, have we, have you guys engaged Shippel and received the no effect plan letter? I didn't see that.
So we've contacted Shippel, they said we need an archaeological study, uh, the applicant is coordinating and getting that completed.
Uh, for the board that doesn't prevent you guys from taking action on the seeker tonight. Like with anything that requires a site plan approval, it would be a condition or a suggested condition for your consideration. As part of the site plan approval with understanding that if for some reason the faceletting does identify something on site, they gotta come back to you for a minute plan approval anyway. So as long as the board's confident, comfortable with that, that, that would be a suggested condition tonight. Yeah, the no effect. As part of the final site plan application to which point we can deal with it enough. The second one is the E A F mapper, which D C documents throws a big wide net over the property. Of which in this particular instance identified a ball legalist test. Potential of being located near the property. My question to you guys is, have you guys done, had an investigation or study done to document after, is anything outside?
No, I think that would. Possibly coincide with the archaeological, uh.
Yeah. I missed it, I apologize.
There's a letter that came in, um. That stated that it was outside the bounds, it's a letter that came from the D C.
Perfect, that was my question, I, I missed it.
Lance, you do a copy, comes from New York D C.
Yeah, if it's, if it's down there, I should have, I just missed it in my correspondence.
In that, it talks about the ball legalist states that it's outside it, they feel it was last seen in two thousand seventeen.
Yeah.
Um, does not feel that it's. Um, let's see. No further review regarding ball, because it decided necessarily at this time. Also talks about Article fifteen protection of waters, gives, um, not a concern. Um, freshwater wetlands, not here, here they break water wetlands, federal wetlands. It does.
They went through their thorough review, which is nice, and they gave it to us in a timely fashion.
Thanks for pointing that out, I completely missed that.
Responsible. Stated November eleventh.
I just, when I download all the materials, I throw it all in there and I try to go through each one, for whatever reason, I just missed that, I apologize. So I guess that addresses my second question.
Oh yeah, you're right.
See anything? Maybe it was, one of it was the M U O. Any concerns about N R I features, there's a wetlands in the back. I think slopes are an issue of. Unfarmed farmland.
But the A G reports, right?
Yeah, the A G committee said, uh, stop being farmed and there's, their declaration was no impact to farmland.
The only comment that I made last time, Chuck, was you did have that, uh, residential area that was adjacent to it. And, uh, we had some discussion as whether or not they would be notified at that time because of distances. But, and it goes into a completely different town, so that was the only decision that I recall from my last conversation.
Uh, yeah, as far as notification, I, I don't think we were required under site plan. Yeah, to do it, uh, the zoning change certainly would have had a. Should have had a notification and if it goes back to the board for the final zone, it should be part of the notification, so. I think this will, we'll hear about it one way or the other, I, I haven't heard any objections yet.
With the zoning to keep it there, so just so I understand it correctly, it went to the town board. To be considered for M U O, town board said, planning board review weigh in. We reviewed, I think in May, gave our feedback. It went back to town board and the town board is asking us to.
So the, the town board made a. A preliminary designation, a preliminary positive decision.
Okay.
Biting on nobody, but said, yes, this should proceed to site plan.
So then we're reviewing it here today under its current zoning.
No.
Requirements or under?
Under the theory that it will bring in, because you've got the town boards giving it preliminary designation of approval.
Okay.
Plus you're only looking at a preliminary, not final, so as. As the steps were to, yes, under existing conditions scenario, it is, but with the notion that the town board. Vetted it out first to grant their sort of blessing of a project.
No chance they were gonna give it the mixed use designation, they was.
Right, right.
Waste your time.
So we're within bounds here, we're not, okay, that, just wanted to make sure.
Providing standing to the applicant and to the town board to proceed with the resort.
Right, okay.
Because the, this, this thing's only say R one. There's no way we would comply with the other one.
Also, you're the most appropriate board to conduct a environmental review of the application, so that's the other reason.
John, may I ask you two questions for you, John? Will you have a dumpster?
Uh, that's a good question, most likely, yeah. Um, you can find a spot.
A spot and then a closure?
Yeah, yeah.
Can make that?
Yeah.
And I guess this is really to you, Chuck, or Lance, maybe even, it's, do we need to ask for a? Sidewalk entrance, so. He's.
On the.
We've now got this one, we've got the gymnastics down south of that. Yeah, exactly, I mean, this doesn't show any amendments for sidewalk or potential, I don't know.
I have it from May, in my.
Yeah, I guess.
Should at least. At least.
Outside the, uh. Right away of the county railway.
Yeah, I feel like we have that conversation.
I know, it got in my minutes.
We did discuss it back.
Okay, so here. My only two questions. You, uh, did you submit like a statement of operations, I know with the M U O, it's. Not a requirement, but I know Mr. Gilbert, when he filed the, uh, M U O request, he had a letter of intent, he described. The facility, what it's gonna have, we discussed, uh, it was strictly gonna be for practices and it wouldn't be for competitions, because it wouldn't be. Big enough building to have a. You know, a standard pitch or soccer or anything, so, um. Hours, is that, uh, the hours, to be honest with you, Chuck, I don't know if they did it, this, could you check and see if they? Does he mention hours? I know you had a photograph of it. Thing of the lighting and also I assumed there would be. Be night hours after dark hours, which is fine, but, uh, just it'd be nice to know, tie down the. Hours of operation. So Lance, if you can. Uh, landscaping, uh, you wanna go to the landscape plan? Okay, you have some, uh. Nice deciduous trees planned on the, uh. It's the south, south border, but I'm thinking along the frontage of, uh. County Route twenty two, I know is a concern of the county planning board. And also, uh, I think it was the county, I think we mentioned it in the M U O discussions that, uh. It'd be nice to have a buffer along that side of the building, on the, uh, between the road and the new building. Uh, we've been trying to develop buffers, I know with the Serpro. They put some landscaping in along their side. Wasn't too generous, but they did some. And, uh, it'd be nice, uh, to maybe screen, because I assume that's gonna be a, like a pre-engineered metal frame building.
Yeah.
So. Driving by on County, you're looking at a. Looks like a, a storage barn, so, uh, I assume there's no windows on that side. So again, uh, similar to some of the trees you're proposing. Uh, along the south side, if you can consider those on the. West side, sure, yeah. You want something more to bring?
No, I'm just thinking signage, doing signage. Uh, that's a good question, I can't answer that, I'm not sure if they're, uh. Certainly.
Yeah, well, that's in the C C district, uh, I don't, this might just be, if it's a standalone freestanding. Just go to coenforcement as long as it needs to size. Be nice if you had an ideal location sign, yep, maybe, you, you don't have to give us the, the provision.
Yep.
Line and all that. Just to, uh, make sure there's no site distance issues there. How is your site distance?
Uh, it's, it, I don't know the exact distances, but, um. At least looking. Towards the north, you can see all the way to the, uh, intersection there.
Lance, could you include that, uh, site distance from the driveway up and down County Route? Uh, how you making out with your septic system? Are you, is it D O H or are you talking with Tyler?
Uh, neither.
Watership, okay.
Neither does it require any, either they're new. You're gonna need approval for the septic system, I believe it's just candidate or coenforcement.
And D O H, I don't think, D O H. They will refer it to them as part of the process, typically they have. But you're right, it doesn't require for D O H standards. You.
The only few of those that are.
You know, they still only reviews the. The not conforming.
Oh, or the, this is, uh, for, do they do those? D O H?
D O H, they do. He, he does it when it's over a certain size, D O H does it when it's not meeting the standard, um, design criteria.
Sorry.
Town refers it to them as part of the reviewing process for subway systems.
We have it covered as a condition.
Well, it's, being preliminary, that's where I had it and then I removed it because I figured. Preliminary approval this time and.
No, put, so everything that we're ever gonna use as conditioning to be in preliminary, can add conditions in final. The other thing is. That this will be useful, that kind of. Hitty gritty will be useful for the town board in rendering their next level decision, because I guess we. Who, you know, how do we know the septic is good?
So you're not gonna get an approval letter of the septic system prior to final plans. I don't believe they're gonna require a final.
Yeah, that's fine. Just say.
At least the town board knows it's pending.
Somebody address.
Somebody's not, yeah, it's gotta be.
Make the statement that that approval is required prior to issues of C of all like you're talking others.
Bingo.
Okay, uh, I think you stated the heights would be no greater than twenty-six feet. Heights of the buildings. Assume this, I think so. I can't remember. On your zoning data block, uh, probably on the site plan. Want to make sure we're not getting too high a bill.
Uh, Jim Fletcher had a comment about the you're putting the four inch water line in.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you're gonna have to go under.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, yes.
Yeah, so that's gotta be board.
The principal max principal use building pipe. Uh, maximum by law is thirty-five feet and proposed is thirty.
Thank you, Chris. Okay. Or how we make a. Uh, we've got to go through one more bureaucratic procedure regarding secret. It is since it is a. Type one. Or. By food seeker.
Stay worried because it's in an ag district, you knew there's certain more than two point five acres of starch.
So Lance, I would ask you to walk us through.
Sure.
So step one prior to proceeding in your packet.
Yeah, step one in your in your packet, being that this board has identified this to be a type one action. To which then we completed a coordinated review with other agencies. And fulfilled the time period that's required to allow those agencies an opportunity to respond back to you guys. And whether or not they have any objection to you completing the environmental view of this application to which none. I believe have responded back with any objection to that.
One evening, so don't care.
So yeah, with that being said, step one would be to declare you guys actually as an agency. Which then authorizes you to move forward to completing the environmental review. So. The first step was the first resolution that's in your packet, declaring the town can they were playing board and lead agency by this application. I would need that to address.
First off, I want to make sure there's no way in the public has any comments on this. Again, nobody is there, nobody here, so I have gone out. No one responded, so let's get back to the declaring the lead agency resolution. Somebody want to make.
I'll make the motion that we are. Hereby designating ourselves as a lead agent. For. C P N twenty-three, one hundred and twenty-six, twenty-nine.
Motion second for the discussion. It's not all in favor.
Now that you've declared yourself the agency that allows you, the board, to move forward with review of the full V A F part two. Which is provided to you in your packet as well as a blank document, being that this board, our task is to go through and complete that. So. Now, let me just read a quick prompt to to what this is and then, even though I'm sure you guys are familiar. Part two is completed by the lead agency. That's the part two is designed to help the lead agency inventory of all. Potential resources that could be affected by a proposed project or action. It is recognized that the lead agency reviewers will not necessarily be environmental professionals, so the questions are designed to walk a reviewer. Through the assessment process by providing a series of questions that can be answered using the information found in the full E F part one, which was also. To further assist the lead agency completing part two, the form identifies the most relevant questions in part one that will provide. Information needed to answer the part two questions. When part two is completed, the lead agency will have identified the relevant environmental. Areas that may be impacted by the proposed activity. So our job is to go through the big questions, which there are eighteen and identify if they are. Have any potential issues related to the project site. If they are, then we then go in and we define that potential impact by answering to subsequent. Questions that are there for each of those those topics. Our job then, once we go through that, is to identify whether or not that potential impact is a small to no impact. Or moderate to large impact. Depending on that answer, there's other items that would have to be provided. So moving forward, impact on land one. Um, the general, I typically would go underneath the topic and. Proposed action may involve construction on our physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. And then it refers to some some categories of the project. Does this board believe that is a potential impact? I have identified it as just that this is disturbance of land. There's gonna be some. Potential impact related to. To that site.
Yes.
The subsequent questions, I'll read each one and then we go as as a board and need you guys to tell me whether or not it's a no or small. Or minor to large. A, the proposed action will involve construction on land where duct to water table is less than three feet. Just for references purposes, G A F part one has that information and it's greater than, I think it's eight feet or greater. Is it up to water?
Okay, so that's how you know. Agreed?
Agreed.
Yes.
B, the proposed action may involve construction on slopes of fifty percent or greater. Same thing that has information located in the E A F. I don't believe. Slopes are. C, proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet of the ground. Same.
Part one says it's not, no. That it's a no.
No.
Uh, D, the proposed action may involve excavation and removal of more than a thousand tons of match and tear. Uh, E, the proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or multiple phases. I don't believe that's the intent or identified.
It is. I don't think it's a.
No.
Small or big. Is he building in phases or? It's gonna build it all once. Okay.
F, proposed action may result in increased erosion weather from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, including treatment from herbicides. G, the proposed action is or may be located within a coastal erosion hazard area.
No.
Is there any others that we need to list there? Moving on to impact on geological features. Proposed action may result in modification and destruction of or inhabit access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site. They're not identified. So then overall answers no, then we move on. Three attacks on surface water. Proposed action may affect one or more wetlands, other surface water bodies, streams, rivers. Ponds or lakes. So there's two ways to look at it. I looked at it originally that the E A F identified it as a, there is wetlands nearby, so I said yes. And then I think we could go through based on the D C's memo and answer the rest of the questions.
Good, great. Let's do this.
Yep.
Yes, A, the proposed action may create a new water body.
Nope.
B.
Base.
Now, so.
So what?
Basins, stormwater basin, water body by definition, E A F is I think more like a. Um, holding area, not so much pond. That makes sense. I didn't really describe that well. Uh, B, the proposed action may result in an increase or decrease of over ten percent. Or more than a ten acre increase or decrease in surface area of any water body. C, the proposed action may involve dredging more than a hundred cubic yards of material from a wetland or water body. D, the proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater tidal wetland or in the better banks of any water body. I don't believe any disturbance is proposed, so.
No, I'm just saying how that swam the best.
E, the proposed action may create turbidity in a water body either from upland erosion runoff or disturbing body sediments.
No, no, no.
F, the proposed action may include construction of one or more intakes withdrawal from water surface. From surface waters. G, the proposed action may include construction of one or more outfalls for discharge of wastewater to surface waters. Okay, H. The proposed action. May cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge. That may lead lead to siltation or other degradation of receiving water lines.
It may, but I think we've. Applications pass figured that if there's adequate soil control. It will not cause.
Any of a strong stormwater prevention.
Right, they have a interrosion seminar drill plan with a construction sequence. They'll have a D C permit that guide them over them. Over this.
The worst it would be a small.
I, the proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the site of the proposed action. The proposed action may in involve the application of pesticides or herbicides in or around any water.
It's got the phosphorus.
I believe so. Nah, I think I love it.
Yeah, I think.
Okay, the proposed action may require the construction of new or expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities. So it is.
But there shouldn't be any impact.
They are building a. Wastewater treatment.
Or it's comfortable with a no or small.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah.
Other four. Moving on before impact on groundwater, the proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater. Or may have potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or on fire. So to the board, I didn't see an issue there and identified it as.
No.
Uh, moving on, impact on flooding, the proposed action may result in the development on land subject to flooding. I didn't see a flood zone for this area.
Nope.
Number six, impact on air, proposed action mainly state regulated air emission source. Seven, impact on plants and animals. The proposed action may result in a loss of fluorofon. Again, originally looking at the document, it E A F part one triggers it is is yes. Says there is the potential that there's endangered species located outside mainly because of the. Alright, so we can, so board can use that to end their answer no and move on or say yes and. Again, utilize that information to answer the question.
I see.
No, no. No, yeah.
Eight, impact on agricultural resources. The proposed action may impact agricultural resources.
Nope.
Similar to. Eight is no. Nine, impact on aesthetic resources. The landing, the land use of the proposed action are obviously different. For in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource. I don't believe there are any designated near the area or in proximity to the area.
You should.
I guess, no. Ten, impact on historic archaeological resources. Proposed action maker in or adjacent to restore. Our archaeological resource. I have identified that as a yes based on shit. We know that. Consultation with state historic preservation office is ongoing. The face study is being provided. So we'll move on to those, to the subsequent questions. A, the proposed action may occur wholly or partially within a subs- substantially contiguous to any buildings. Archaeological site or district which is listed on the national or state registered or historic places. Where that has been determined by the commission of New York State Office of Parks Recreation. Historic preservation to be eligible for listing on the state register of historic places. They're not near an historic building, so that would be potentially. E, the proposed action maker wholly or partially within a substantially contiguous to any area. Designated as a sensitive for archaeological sites on the New York State uh historic preservation archaeological site inventory. Don't believe that. Um, that's not, I'm just making sure I'm not. I think that is a yes one. It does potentially because that's where the archaeological studies.
Or small impact because he. Okay, I don't, I don't see it's a A B, moderate, it's a large, small, small ball.
Okay.
And assuming we get the letter.
All be required. See, the proposed action may occur wholly or partially within a substantially contiguous to an archaeological site, not included on the. No other impacts, then we only have the E if we answer moderate to large, sending the previous one. So moving on to eleven, impact on open space and recreation. The proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or reduction of open space resources designated in any. Adopted municipal open space plan.
No.
It'll increase.
Alright, well, impact on critical environmental areas. The proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a critical environmental area. I don't believe any were identified from.
That's one of the paths that they have to respond to.
Alright, thirteen, transportation. The proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems.
No.
Okay. Fourteen, impact on energy. The proposed action may cause an increase in the use any form of energy. So a lot of this came up on one of the previous projects with this board. D C does give examples of potential type impacts. And there is no substation required impact improvements associated with this. It's it's. Gonna have allowable connection. I don't believe there's been any. Um, correspondences from any the the engine, the utility companies identifying the concern. With this type of uh use for that area. Just to give you an example.
So no.
Fifteen, impact on noise, odor and light. Proposed action may result in an increase in noise orders or outdoor lighting.
Nope.
Sixteen, impact on human health. The proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new. Or existing source of contaminants.
No.
I don't think there's any contamination. Seventeen, consistency with community plans, but proposed action is not consistent with adopt the management.
Double negative.
No.
No.
Right, eighteen, consistency with community character. The proposed action is inconsistent with the existing community character.
No.
Yes. Alright, so the board has completed the fully if part two. Uh, believe you've identified either no to small impacts for all eighteen questions. So the next step is to go over the E A F part three, which is basically clarifying. The board's review and whether or not. The board's review, whether or not a negative declaration can be issued. In summary, my statement here just identifies that this board is needed to review. And I've identified no large, large impacts. Therefore can issue this as a negative declaration. If the board agrees with that, then that is the resolution that's. The secret determination of significant resolution.
Okay, if they have a resolution. I don't know, or it's stated, somebody won't make a motion. I'll, I'll make a motion to determine the.
There you go, look. Second.
Bob.
Thank you. Uh, okay, we got a motion second regarding the seeker. Whether, whether there are questions. Very signed up. So, all favor.
I.
Post.
Okay, secret carriage, let's move on to site plan.
Just for the clarification, because this was a type really might have to publish it on the N V website, that's. Notice bulletin, so I'm gonna take our resolution. Um, our negative declaration part three and submit it to the E and B, that's New York State D C E and B for publication. And that runs from a Wednesday to a Wednesday. So if I'm good, if I can get it to them tomorrow, it'll be printed and published the next Wednesday. And I'll also forward it to you guys.
And I guess for Carrie's benefit, she needs it for the minutes.
As she will. Would she need the E and B publication for that?
Oh, no, 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 I'm just thinking about uh our action, uh that she have to include it in the minutes of our meetings. That we went through this.
Yes, I would include that they went through the part two, the fully part two identified all as no to small impacts and issued a negative declaration. I think that's.
Oh, so she doesn't have to include that.
I would, I would, I'm sorry, you know, I am most certainly going to provide her with all the materials that. Absolutely, I apologize.
No, that's right, sure. She, she didn't sit there and take minutes on each one of those actions. Uh, okay, so that's, we double seeker.
Double seeker.
Alright, move on to site plan. We have a resolution in front of us, I guess we're gonna have a couple of conditions if somebody.
I'll make a motion to approve primary site plan approval resolution for C P N twenty-three dash. One hundred at twenty-six twenty-five County Road twenty-two. In the new N U O district hopefully. And it's listed as nine, but I believe there's more.
Yes. Would the board like me to withdraw or does it change?
They added.
Alright, so. Change number is number five, I, I struck out that because I was referencing the county sewer department and that's not correct. So five is now worded, the approval of the subject system by the town and New York State V O H is required to be provided. Prior to the issuance of a building permit or construction. I'll mimic what we typically do, I can't remember exactly the words. That was, that's the new five. Ten, I have, um, the state historic preservation office ship of is to issue a no effect finding letter. That is to be provided prior to the issuance of a building permit or construction beginning on the project site. Number eleven, I have the plans that are to be revised to depict a ten foot wide sidewalk these month. Along County Road twenty-two extending from the southern part of the line to the northern top, and I believe that's directions. Number thirteen, I have the site plans are to be revised to label the, the site distance for the proposed driveway onto County Road twenty-two. And twelve, I have the statement of operations, I went, I'm sorry. Since I was twelve, this is thirteen. Thirteen, the statement of operations is to be revised to clarify the hours of operation. And that is to be provided to the town as part of the final site plan application review process. Are we good with it, worded that way?
Yeah. I'll second.
I, I get a pretty, uh, did you include the additional landscaping on? I mean, I'm sorry, what's the additional landscape? Uh, along the. Runage between the new building and County Route twenty-two. Plans of revise to add additional landscaping in front of the building between County Road twenty-two and the. Uh, of a similar nature to. Whatever he's proposed on the south side there.
And also, we does a. The dumpster have to go on.
Fifteen.
Yeah, it comes a number.
That, that's the only thing that we, did the board feel comfortable there was enough for too many marking spaces, I think that's. So maybe we deliberate on that, we have, I think. I think there was some justification in the letter of intent as to.
Yeah, I think Lance's letter talked about turning radiuses for buses.
Yeah.
Should that, okay. And the only other thing I had in reviewing the seeker. The photometrics. From a lady, do you look at the cut sheets uh to make sure that the lady is conforming?
Yes, we have to read those time, and I'll work with the conference and I'll soon verify.
So that. It confirms that no lady will go offsite.
Correct.
Which is what we said in the seeker, okay. Alright. Motion second. Okay.
That's fifteen conditions.
Alright, for discussion, if not, all favor.
I.
Okay, that was the primary, so we'll look at. See you back about sooner down on the final. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, see us next year. Alright. That takes care of our applications, uh. We got some minutes from back on the twenty-eighth of November. Anybody have any additions or corrections? And since they were set up by Curry. Take a motion.
I'm hoping to accept a minutes on November twenty-eight.
Second.
The motion second, all favor.
Hi.
Hey, we have no, uh. Money to give out for holidays.
See you, buddy.
Referrals. Uh, some training to keep your eye on, I know, uh. Kim sent us a thing on the. E O S one webinar. And there is a municipal boot camp. This Thursday. Six o'clock, which essentially happens to be during our Christmas party, so no one will be sitting on that. So that brings us to Christmas party is, uh. This Thursday at the great. Yeah. Maybe I spend time on these people, might as well. Alright, so the party's from four to eight, that's the least of the town to invite us, so. If you're available, stop by. Uh, it's gonna be our ninth, January meeting will be our. Kickoff meeting for the year, so we will be going through our. Uh, laws of, our rules of procedure, so if you get a chance or. Definitely go through and read those. We have a couple of suggestions. Uh, from staff. Uh, that will be included as there's suggested. To be a part of the new. New package, so I, I feel like we'll go over those.
Sure, I can, I mean, I know. One element that we're talking about as. I feel, we feel that P R C has been difficult. With the applications that have a tight turnaround, like those that have a Z B A application. And a planning board application that run coincide, typically right now as scheduled, it goes to the Z B A. Which is once a month, and then it goes to our second planning board meeting, which is less than a week. Or no, it's exactly a week, excuse me. Um, turnaround, so some of the issues that come up, I think from our level is that either A, we're not getting all the material or information. To us in a, in a fashion that allows us to. Verify what it is that the Z B A was looking at, whatnot, um, or come letters from number B, we typically hold off. Until issuance approval by the Z B A due to the fact that, what if they deny it, and there is no application. Um, so this, by moving them from that second meeting of the month to the first meeting of the month. That'll give us a three week window on most cases to get that information. It also provides ability for staff to not have to show. On an agenda or schedule public hearing for those that require it, if the variance application is just being continued. So.
Yeah.
I think we won't have extra people coming into the meeting, we'll have to worry about extra resolutions that don't need to be provided and so on, so. That is one suggested change for considerations, moving that any Z B A planning board activities. It will go from Z B A to the first meeting of the month, uh, as opposed to the second. Giving us a little bit of time. I think there was some other, they've, the calendar that. Thing we discussed, the other suggestion was trying to move the P R C meeting to provide maximum amount of time. Between application deadline, P R C deadline to give staff more time to, to vet out those projects that need a little more help to get compliance. Um, not necessarily to make staff do more work, but to give them more time to weed out the ones that aren't ready to move forward. So that P R C is more of a, here's what you need to provide, be prepared for, and see you at this meeting, as opposed to, why are you here? This is incomplete, I shouldn't be here. I don't know if we had. Something said. Oh, statement of. Murphy want, uh, code of course, and I'm sorry, has a condition that. He wants us to consider requiring on all. Um, which is state, which is basically mimicking what is already in the site design criteria, which is. Prior to issuance of the C of O, or no, prior to issuance of this surety. Return. And prior to issuance of the C of O, basically because they go hand in hand. The site is required to be stabilized and then, or as per direction on the code of force.
I would like that as a condition of approval.
So.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
I guess they're getting bombarded with these questions constantly having to answer them, even though it's already in our bylaws for the most part. He thought we could add it as a condition, that way the applicant's well aware at this, this, this level that that's gonna be required. Most of those will be under single family.
Right.
So again, uh, read, read the rules we currently have, if you have any, uh. Corrections or additions or amendments. If we have them to the meeting on the ninth or before.
Corrections, additions or amendments. Send them directly to Kristen Lance and myself. We can, you know, if you say, hey, I'd like to see such and such, we can write it up. As an option for the board to vote on rather than.
Yeah.
Bringing your idea to the board meeting. We can do, you can also bring your ideas to the board meeting, but. If you got something between now and then, let me know, I'll write it up and propose it. The other thing I was gonna say, especially with this new schedule. If, as you, I think most of you review the week before, so this isn't really all that applicable. But if you're reviewing far, an application far enough in advance and you say, geez, I'd really like to see such and such, and the applicant didn't. Include that in their application, say like a landslide. Or shoreline development. You can't require it until there's three out of five board members voted, but you can sure as heck call Kristen and say, hey. Can you tell the applicant, I want to see such and such? You don't have to do it. And, you know, in the last week, it's useless, don't do it, but if you're. If two weeks ahead of time, you say, geez, we're just gonna continue this because there's no site development or there's no shoreline guideline. But Kristen, no, give them an opportunity to, you know, shoot her an email, she can call the applicant, hey. Did you wanna do this before the meeting or after the meeting? That's my thought.
I have an opportunity not to do it on the year Tuesday. For the meeting.
I know, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, that's alright, there was, there was one other element that we were considering at one point, and that's when we had the. Bombardments of all these applications appearing before you at one meeting. And we were considering whether or not that's something that the board should consider adding to the rules of procedure, but I honestly, I. I feel the P R C is kind of starting to correct that issue as best as we can. Um, but that's something to consider if you guys feel that there needs to be some other stopgap. And into, in, to how we move forward with number of applications. At one night or a time period, if anyone to consider, no matter what, or give you guys the opportunity to, that's obviously something optional, but at this moment. We have a tracking mechanism that we are using, so when P R C applications are coming in, we start approaching on that number. We're trying to head it off at that moment and move them to future board meetings as opposed to immediately putting them all on one.
Right.
And I do think the Z B A continuation. It doesn't seem like it's a big, it, it's gonna level some of that off too, because inevitably we always have continuation. The second board meetings are new meetings. New applications and now continue, basically continued ones from Z B A.
Yeah.
Where now that would go to our first meeting.
Yeah.
Which would. Should level it off.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, also at the January ninth meeting, we'll do our three appointments. Uh, based on the draft calendar. Chris, Chris, if we do send out the draft calendar. I think we made some corrections yesterday, your C. So, you sent me method one out. And so, Kim, Kim, if you have on the agenda, the. Rules or regulations, uh, the appointments. Go back and look at last year's, it's. It's just an S O P. We'll get through and the calendar. Okay. Uh, Kim had requested newsletter. Articles, and I sent her an email, if. If you have something you wanna. Suggest or include or one of your projects that. You've been working on, I, I, I can write something up on the site design criteria that. Why we did, what we did and all that. Uh, if you guys have something you wanna write on.
E D.
Something. Solar, I mean, the solar. Solar's fresh.
Well, on, on the solar thing, I. I mentioned it yesterday the other day, but the. One thing I'm working on checklist. Hopefully for P R C enter later on, I don't, by word, because when we did the last solder. There was. Documents in the file that were not named the right. So the code says you have to have this certain document. We'd like to have, I'd like to have that documents listed. As such, and that was on the checklist. But also, we talked about a little bit about, um, something I learned in uh, Lewis County. That one of their rules was five hundred feet. You couldn't have a sole apartment in five hundred feet of a building, a residential building.
Hmm.
Is it county? Aren't, yeah, living. Oh, in Livingston, living. There was one of their rules that, um. And it kind of. Would take care of a lot of the noise or site issues and things like that if it did. Possibly add that to code.
Certainly be no notification.
Pretty good.
Be no notifications of that.
Right, that's true.
Yeah.
One way off.
Yeah.
The problem is, you got farmers who have their house on their property. And they wanna. Let some seventy-five acres to a solar farm.
The farming egg is out of the code though right now.
That's true.
Or maybe they're not, um. Yeah, so.
Yeah, they, they were, we, M R B works with Livingston County, we have trials a lot of the county solar laws, but. That was something they, that, most of the communities there are considering, doing due to those, some of those reasons they come up with a lot of work.
Yeah, keep, keep it in your discretion. You can't, don't let that, you know, a solar project can disturb adjacent residential uses. So you get to decide if it's disturbing. Some neighbors might be thrilled with it. Great, I'll get to try and, yeah. Try to avoid blanket prohibitions. Cause then there's no flexibility. But special use for it is a ton of flexibility, and you guys get to exercise discretion. Uh. Educated, experience discretion saying, alright, I get it, you don't want it there, but that doesn't mean. It's gonna really be, you know, you're not gonna hear the hum, you're not gonna be blinded by the reflection like everyone thinks it's gonna happen.
When every, every single solar farm I looked at, Livingston County, you could not see it from the road. You, they were way out there. You could, they were.
They have some pretty good property.
They could got more, that's easier to, to do in Livingston.
Yeah, they have some big properties.
Hey, Bob, as you're doing that. Um. If you wanted to, you could. Adapt that checklist to cell towers and. Well, because it's all the same documents.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, and. What's the other thing that? Cell towers, solar. Wind, and there's another. Wind, and there's another thing that requires the same stuff.
So that's a good question, what? How did it ever be that there is a really, a cell, cell tower and again on top of a hill?
Be on top of a hill, it can't be on top of a. I think. I think because fifty years ago, when these things are, how, forty years ago. Uh, people were saying, oh, that's a great spot because it's a little bit higher. And that drum, those drumlins were pretty much made out of sand and those cell towers would sink and then tip and hurt people. Now, I'm pretty sure we have engineering and construction techniques. So that that's not an issue, but I. You know.
Sure.
And it's the same as why gas stations. Uh, weren't allowed to be within five hundred feet of each other, because. If one of them blew up, then you'd have a chain reaction. Now we have fire suppression requirements. At all gas stations and it's unlikely that you're gonna have a domino.
Steel tanks leaked.
Yeah.
Chances of mitigation.
But those requirements and special use permits especially. Um. A lot of them are from the nineteen seventies. Uh, the best. The best. Protections that the planners and the lawyers and the municipal experts could come up with. In like the fifty, sixty, seventies and eights. Now, yeah, I kind of assume the technology will solve everything and we don't have to worry, but. We got them there now. So that you guys can wave it if you're comfortable. After hearing proof, after someone stands there and says. Don't worry, we. We know how to build on a drum, we're not gonna let our multimillion dollar cell tower fall over.
Okay. Uh, looking ahead to next year, uh, January ninth meeting doesn't look bad. Twenty-third. Little busier. Uh, we're gonna see a lot of probably form base. Next year and anticipation of that, I know Sarah is trying to put together. I like a tutorial of the form base code. That's something I'm trying to have it in January, middle of January. Obviously up to the holidays, so, uh. That should be helpful, uh. More of a form base next year. Anybody have anything else to finish out the year? It's been great working with everybody again.
Shouldn't, but here, you guys have done a lot of hard work.
Yeah.
This is, but you've turned over a lot of, a lot of applications. Staff, Lance, and all of you guys, and you guys over there. You've done really good work and I assume you've all got your training as well. I'm very impressed by that. Thank you. You guys are a great board. Get better every year.
Good. Okay.
Okay. I'll make your motion to adjourn at seven thirty-three this evening for the remainder of the year.
Mark, not you. All.
Yes.
Okay, have a great holiday. Good New Year's, see you all next.